I'll take the motion when we exit executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll take it, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
If there was a same sign, if you would certify the executive session, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify as best of our knowledge on the public matters often exempted from the open meeting requirements, not only such public meeting business matters that were identified in the motion to go into executive session or heard and discussed or considered in the executive session, they were 2.23711A1 personnel, 2.23711A2 student dissonance, 2.23711A7 consultation with legal counsel for litigation, 2.23711A8 consultation with legal counsel general.
Mr. Zach Wheaton?
Yes.
Mr. Bosse?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Coog?
Yes.
Ms. Kempson?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Allen. Alright, thank you. This time, two stamps of invitation. Please, ladies and gentlemen, take a seat. Mr. Bosse, if you would please.
Father Lord, my children, please, my Father, with my worship, I ask you to forgive my short term this time, asking orders to be with us and help us to be in a place where our community, our students, and our families, help us to be with those who are hurting and need, asking orders to help those who are in low bloods and those that are hurting, Father, and with all the decisions to be made, and with our children to that kingdom, Jesus has us.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Brown, do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have one item, an action item, dealing with the representation from staff on a request from the elder group, and I have shared that with Madam Court.
Alright, this time I'll take the motion to amend the agenda.
Sure.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
If there was a same sign, this time I'll take the motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
If there was a same sign, turn then. The board's had the opportunity to review the minutes, I'll take the motion if we can spend the reading of the agenda at this time.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to dispense with the reading of the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
If there was a same sign, turn then, this time I'll take the motion, we approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Allen, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? If none, all in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
If there was a same sign, turn then. Dr. Brown, we're down to delegation on the agenda, please.
We have no formal request at this time, Mr. Chairman, we do have, again, an opportunity at the end of the meeting for delegations that are present in office.
Thank you, sir. This time, we're down to recognitions, please.
Thank you, sir, I ask Mr. Fletcher to join me, junior recognition. And, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we do have some students that we'd like to recognize, either excel or is represented as well, very proud of them. First of all, from Lebanon High School, I'd like to ask Avery Price to come forward with her parents, coaches, and administrators that came here.
I'm coming. I got a new hip and I hang dough.
Doing pretty well, actually.
Yeah. I'm in the hospital days or what?
What's wrong?
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Dr. Brown, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we greatly appreciate you all taking your time out of your evening to recognize all of our student accomplishments in Russell County. We have a great student body and we're just so proud of all of them, whether it's Lebanon, Honeaker, or Castlewood. From Lebanon, we recognize Ms. Avery Price tonight, Avery made All-State and I'll let Coach Parker discuss her basketball accomplishment, but I've known Avery, she's been about knee-high to me, great young lady, excellent student at Lebanon High School, she's involved in higher academics, taking dual enrollment courses already, and she's a junior and she's got a great future ahead of her, I'm just glad as a principal that Avery's going to be with us another year and represent Lebanon High School well. Congratulations, Avery.
Thank you. Avery, she's been a three-year starter for us, she spends, she's helped lead us to, I think we've won forty games the last two years, that's the best two-year run we've had. This past year, I think she was co-player of the year in the district, first team, All-Region, and then, of course, second team, All-State. Avery spends a lot of her summers, weekends, gives them away to improve her game during the offseason. Last couple of years, she's led us in scoring, she usually, we usually put her on the other team's best point guard or wing player, and I guess the most impressive thing about her, like Mr. Long said, is she's one of the top students in the junior class and an even better person. I guess the best news is, he said, we've got her back for one more year. We're really proud of her, we love her, congratulations, Avery.
We have a little acknowledgement, present to Avery Price, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School Board and recognition of selection to the 2018-19 Group 2A VHSL Girls All-State Basketball Second Team.
Congratulations, Avery.
Next, we have two students from Honeaker High School who have made the All-State Basketball Team, we have a young lady, we'd like to ask Leanna McNulty, Grace at Honeaker, to come forward with her coaches and administrators, Honeaker High School, bring your parents with you.
Mr. Bush? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Brown, we've had the opportunity to recognize this student from this camp, I congratulate Avery for making the All-State Team, and too. All-State players herself this year, Grace is with us tonight, make second team All-State, Leanna is not with us tonight, I guess you can probably guess where she's at, she's playing nice. We do appreciate the opportunity to be here, recognize these students, and this time I'm asking, uh, Misty, Leanna's coach, if she would say a few things about Leanna.
Leanna, I want to apologize for her, she started a week after we finished, she's playing with a team that's playing in some showcase tournaments, and she had an obligation to be there with them tonight, or she would be here, she wanted to thank you all for representing her plaque. Leanna's a sophomore, and she's been a two-year starter for me, she, to be so young and to accomplish what she has already, I think, it's just we're all really excited to see what she'll accomplish the next two years. She averaged twenty-four points this season, she scored her thousandth point as a sophomore, she finished the year with, out of her two seasons, she's at like thirteen-hundred-and-ten points for two years combined, she averaged fourteen rebounds, she should get her thousandth rebound first the next season, so she's, she's just accomplished a lot, but it says a lot for her hard work, she, she works continuous, one week off and she was, she was about to go crazy, she was ready to get back in the gym, so I'm really excited to see what her future holds, she was Player of the Year in the district, first team All-District, Player of the Year in the region, first team All-Region, and then first team All-State. She helped lead our team to, well, she, the team as a whole did really well, but she led us to Final Four of the state this year with a young team, so we're excited to see what we can do next year.
Well, I've talked about this kid so much, I've got my speeches memorized, all the newspapers call all the time, so I'm, I'm a little shocked here, he's not even good at baseball. No, we, seriously, we have Misty and myself, we got two really, really good student athletes on our team, Grayson's an amazing basketball player, he works extremely hard at this game, there's not many people really knows the sacrifice, he's, Leanna, of course, Leanna's not here, but those two kids, the sacrifice they make, I mean, it's, we just came from the gym, you know, before we got over here, it's, it's all the time, and it's something that if you want to be the best, you got to put the time in, you got to work at your craft, and this man right here, he works non-stop, and he does everything that he, that he's getting, and I just pray God continues to bless him, and, and the sky's the limit with him, I said that up here last year. He, he's like Leanna, he's, he already broke his thousand points as a sophomore, he's at twelve forty-four, I think, right now, as a, as a sophomore, he's got a real, real good chance to, to get up in the mid-two thousands and maybe the three thousand and break some, if y'all ever heard of Matt McClan, maybe break his record, that would be awesome. But Grayson, this year he averages right at twenty-eight points a game, he averaged nine rebounds a game as my point guard, so that, if you know anything about basketball, that's ridiculous, five assists, just stepped his game up in every category, makes us a better team, I'm so proud of him, so proud of him, and he's a beautiful, wonderful family, great support, and, you know, and I just pray God continues to bless him. Presenting Leanna McNulty, Honeaker High School, by the Russell County School Board and recognition of selection to the 2018-19 Class 1 VHSL Girls All-State Basketball Team Second. And presenting Grayson Hunnaker, Honeaker High School, by the Russell County School Board and recognition of selection to the 2018-19 Class 1 VHSL Boys All-State Basketball Second Team. Come forward with his family, and Mr. Bush is going to tell us about this honor, I think, this nominee.
Officer Muck is our school resource officer at Honeaker High School, we are so blessed to have him, definitely incredible, just an honor to be working with him at school. The thing about Jason is, he gets to know all the kids really well, I mean, he cuts up, carries on with them, he's able to find out a lot of things with the kids because they have it trusted him, and build that relationship that I think no other resource officer that I've ever had been able to do. I'll tell you a little story about Officer Muck, when he was in high school, I was, I was his teacher, and I was also a wrestling coach out here at Lebanon High, and all these kids started coming up to me and saying, "Mr. Bush, you got a kid here that wants to arm wrestle you." We had these arm wrestle matches at Capteria one day, and needless to say, you could tell by the size of him, who ended up being the winner of that one, I never did an arm wrestle, Muck after that, he got rubbed my arm, that was in high school. Obviously, I think that Officer Muck, with his physical presence, does a long ways, but that's not what, the best thing about Officer Muck, Officer Muck treats every kid at our school fairly, he recognizes, he don't care how much money they have or how poor they are, he's gone out to Walmart and other places, bought kids sweatshirts and shoes and hoes, bought them to school, and golf clubs, we got this kid at school that didn't have any golf clubs, Officer Muck, when they even said a golf club, you know how expensive golf clubs are, but we are just so fortunate to, to have somebody like Officer Muck at our school, and when I read this email about nominating somebody as a hero, I felt it was very fitting that I nominated Officer Muck, because in my profession, somebody like him is such a great asset to the students in the school, so Officer Muck, this is a, an award that you are truly a good recipient, and I think that you deserve this more than anybody that I know, thank you for what you do at our school on a daily basis, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Before I read this, I guess I had a Jason Muck story I had to share, it ties in wonderfully, and we didn't prepare this, it ties in wonderfully what you said, my first time meeting Mr. Bush, he was walking downstairs, I was walking around with Mr. Bush, and he's got these golf clubs, the driver in his hand, first of all, I see him, I'm thinking, yeah, okay, then he's got a golf club in his hand, alright, I'm thinking, okay, so anyway, he, he stops and he tells me quickly, you know, I was sharing this with a kid, wanting him to see how fit and that type of thing, but anyway, I, I'll never will forget my first experience that you've got a golf club in your hand. Anyway, presented to Jason Muck, and it's open to our appreciation and acknowledgement, school reso, school, school resource officer at Honeaker High School by the Russell County School Board and recognition of being named American Red Cross Hero.
Finally, we have Officer Muck, which group is selected tonight, Honeaker Elementary School, they receive both the school employee and the employee of the month, but this time I'd like to ask Mr. Mullins to come forward with Honeaker Elementary Cafeteria staff or the sport group, and future of the month, Mr. Bush. Before I read what the application says, Mr. Mullins, if you would introduce your cafeteria staff, which is, I don't know.
Okay, our cafeteria manager, Ms. Judy Sargent, she's in, in charge of the troops, we've got a few miss in here, then we have Ms. Rita Dean Baldwin, and then we've got Veronica, we call her, but Robyn Boss, Johnny Anderson, sometimes known as Johnny the gymnast, there's nothing crazy going on in the cafeteria, just a little nickname there, but these ladies, you know, get the breakfast and lunches and, and make sure that these kids are fed, and, you know, if they can, they'll pack them, you know, and send it home in the morning, and they absolutely love the kids, and the kids, they look forward to lunch, lunches have went up for them, and they work really hard with it, and I really appreciate everything they do, and then, of course, this is very pat, Tamara Bush, Tamara Bush, our Teacher of the Month, very proud of all of them for what they do and the effort they put into our kids, you know, in the classroom, and if you've ever dealt with a, and those of you that are in school, have dealt with parents that are upset over kids, this teacher will get upset over something happening with her kid, and she's like, now you ain't doing my kid that way, you make sure you listen to both sides, she'll take care of them, and more than likely, you know, if her husband would approve, she might have more kids coming home, because she doesn't care that much about them, and that's the same way our staff is here, all the way around, and we're very blessed to have people like these here on the night, thank you all for taking your time to this.
I'd like to read to you the nomination form of the cafeteria staff, this cafeteria staff is amazing, this group of ladies truly love each other, and that love just flows through our students, to students, it's great how they call students, six hundred-plus students, by their name when they come through the line, greet the students with a huge smile and a kind word, you've had kids that have needed jackets or shirts washed because of the steel or for various other reasons, and they do it and deliver the item back to the student, if you're just casually going through the cafeteria while they're preparing food for breakfast or lunch, you can hear them talking and laughing, just having a good time, you can't recognize one without recognizing all of them, because they're a team, congratulations, and for Ms. Bush, we have two or three nominations, and I'll read some snippets from them, first one, an awesome teacher and leader, one of the other nominations says Tamara spent many hours organizing the very successful fundraiser for our school, she was a wonderful leader that knew how to get the job done, that night the fundraiser ran smoothly thanks to her, I've heard from many community members about what a good time they had, and they hope we'll do it again soon, without Tamara Bush, this fundraising event would not have been successful, was very blessed to have her on staff at Honeaker Elementary School, several of us contributed to that fundraiser, too. And then another nomination, we're on the fundraising committee together, and she really showed what a true leader she is, she took this event and made everything possible for many months, from organizing meetings to shopping for pocketbooks, advertising, making sure the supplies were ordered for the event, and the list goes on and on, not only did she spend many hours planning for the event, she also helped organize student dances for our students during this time as well, and did I mention, all while giving another hundred percent to teaching third grade every day, she shows love for her school and for her students in many ways, I feel like she's a big part of Honeaker Elementary School being so successful, congratulations.
And again, the fundraiser, I, I was there and I really enjoyed the evening, seventy-five dollars donated, my wife and I, we had a great time, but again, walking by her room and, and listening and watching the kids interact, you know, with Ms. Bush is, is really impressive, I have no doubt that the times you walk by her, her door, I guess in the process of day, Mr. Mullins, it's orderly, kids are on task, and people are focused, and there, there's not a whole lot of poor decision-making going on, this is my perception, but, again, Russell County Public Schools acknowledges Tamara Bush as Teacher of the Month for March. And then for the cafeteria staff, a little story there, my mom and I, kind of a two-person team for a long time, she was a school bus driver, I'm just a school bus driver, retired now, and in the mornings, we drove, we drove by the schools, she dropped me off as a, as a big-sized fourth, fifth grader, I'm sure that doesn't surprise you, but we would go down, or I would go down, and I would, I would work with Miss Repas, I'll remember Miss Repas to the day I died, probably, and had one, if she was, I'd, I'd go in, I'd help, just get things out of the refrigerator, out of the dry storage, and, you know, I know what eight cases of number six cans of green beans looks like before and after, guys, so, yeah, we appreciate the work that you do, Russell County Public Schools recognizes Honeaker Elementary Cafeteria Staff as the Employees of the Month for March.
Mr. Mullins, you're very smart, you recognize that character. Congratulations. Before we move too much further, Dr. Brown, I would like to thank locations to our biggest western crowd of mail tonight, to us, it was good mail, we enjoyed it, thank them very much for that. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the safety component of our recognition deals with student reports, last year, the board started the tradition of every other month having our student reps from our three high schools come and give a report, our Lebanon folk cannot make it tonight, we do have our Castlewood and our Honeaker group with us, and I ask for Castlewood High School Alex Smith, the fourth place, from the podium over you.
Thank you for having us here today, I would like to share with you some of the exciting activities going on at Castle High as the U.S. National Union. First, the Blue Devil track came us off through a great circuit, placed four by eight hundred, really didn't place in first at their last meet, with a musical record and qualification for state. The Blue Devil forensic team placed third overall at state, Ryan Law was named the 2018 State Forensics Champion in regional order, Billy Sanders placed second in prose, Mickey Jordan placed third in story telling, Dylan Owens and Scotty Robertson placed third in humor steward, Casper Smith placed fourth in serious trivia and presentation, Andy Patton placed fifth in poetry, Zach Owens placed fifth in prose, and Ethan Warren Troy Long placed fifth in humor steward. We're all excited that our very young man, Director, Mr. Rick Burns, in his faint wild heart announces they will be playing contributors, we hope to see you there on June 1st. The free prom dress sponsored by Ms. Nita Boyd and Grace House on the Mountain has provided us with a few of the dresses, shoes, and accessories at no charge, our prom will be held on Saturday, Saturday May 4th at Castle High. Castle High F.L.A. brought home twenty-one first-place awards, four second places, four third places, and one fourth place in regional qualification held at UVA locks, the group is in wrestling for Jimmy currently, with forty-one students, representing as thirty different competitors, which the team much, much success. Special recognition goes to teacher Phannet Tyler Bonsonship, whose mentor teacher, Ms. Erin Bennett, recognized her outstanding spelling and students, not only did Tyler develop the class with her science project, Tyler created his own science project when she shared facts about biology, he included quizzes throughout his presentation and provided the king rewards to the students, he's been in contact with the school about Tyler and was quoted as a single, I just want to brag on how awesome Tyler is. The after-school program has worked with the Russell County Extension Office, acting up for, providing the students with amazing recipes during the faculty sessions, this month the after-school will feature Appalachian book authors, Rebecca Ellsworth- This month, the after-school will feature Appalachian book authors Rebecca Ellsworth, Rita Quillan, and Addison Simmons on April the sixteenth. We invite each of you to attend as they share readings from the recent books. Please visit the Castlewood Facebook page where we also feature the Castlewood Highgrass. Like Amanda Mead, whose video on the laser community was featured on HGTV. Or Caitlin Wolford-Palms, whose feature at Path of the Latch will be featured on the K network series, "Family Food," shown on Hollywood.
Thank you, Honaker High School, morning still.
For our event, we're going to ask for election and fight data to the celebration of our new batting cage facility and our new first class. With three months left in the school year, students have been gearing up for the upcoming SLU. Fortunately, Honaker High School operates before and after-school tutoring for students who need assistance learning. As you know, fall sports have ended, but a couple of students that play basketball at A and J Jets have been awarded significant honors. Sophomore Benson Honaker is honored as second-team All-State Basketball, VHSL, and VHTA, and first-team All-Region. Another sophomore, Leanna McNulty, was recognized as the Region 1D Player of the Year and first-team All-State. Girls varsity basketball cheer code, or sorry, girls varsity basketball coach, Misty Miller, was awarded as the Region 1D Coach of the Year. Spring sports have recently kicked off, and we are anticipating a wonderful season. The boys' varsity soccer team is currently three-three and one, and the girls' varsity soccer team is one-three and one. Varsity softball is currently two and four. Varsity baseball is currently one and two, and they will be defending their title in the Cofin and the Cofinure Invitational Tournament beginning this Saturday. Honaker High School's baseball batting cage facility is near completion, and work on the press box is undergoing substantial progress. We'd like to thank the Russell County Maintenance Department and VSA for helping repair our baseball field drainage issues. We would also like to thank you for approving the art trip that went to the Baltimore last Friday. It was a very rewarding and educational experience. FPLA traveled to Ruston, Virginia today to compete in the state competition. Forty-eight students at HHS are eligible to compete at the state conference. Honaker High School has the largest chapter in the region with eighty-eight members. On March eighth, the Lions Club hosted a luncheon for the academic team, our state champions, and they were also recognized last Monday by the Board of Supervisors. On March twenty-seventh, guest speaker Sarah Fonzo came to the high school and shared her inspiring story, bringing a positive impact on all of the students. Honaker's Red Blood Festival will be April twelfth through fourteenth. Having already hosted two blood drives, Honaker High School will be hosting a third blood drive on April twenty-ninth. Each drive that we've held has approximately eighty donors. Jason Moak, our school resource officer, was recently chosen as the twenty nineteen recipient of the Celebration Purist through the American Red Cross. And our principal, Mr. Bush, attended school safety training for two days at Emory and Henry College. Prom will be held on May fourth, and excitement and definitely good building out for it. Bachelorette and senior awards have been scheduled for Sunday, May nineteenth, and the date for graduation has been set for Sunday, June second at seven o'clock. In closing, we would like to thank Dr. Brown and the Russell County School Board for the continued support of the students inside of Honaker High School.
Dr. Brown, I believe this is the last report we're going to hear from our students, is that not correct?
That's correct, sir.
They have done an outstanding, outstanding job. If that completes the recognition stuff, Dr. Brown, and the student reports, or to approval of the bills and accounts, this time I'll take a motion if the board has had the opportunity to review the bills and accounts, we make a motion to pay those bills as presented. Think I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed, the same say. There are none. Dr. Brown, I think it takes us to retirements and resignations, please.
Yes, sir. Can I pull that up? Mr. Lovelace?
It's okay. If we could, Mr. Chairman, we'll move forward to the action items, and then we'll see if we can come back to that if that's acceptable.
That'd be fine.
Mr. Chairman, we have two, I guess actually three action items now for the board's consideration. First one is the approval of the last day of school. School divisions across Commonwealth are required to produce a two-hundred-day school calendar with a hundred and eighty days of instruction each year. There is an expectation that the days missed are scheduled to be made up during or at the end of the school year if possible. This one, the school divisions have the ability to convert from one hundred and sixty days of instruction to six hundred and sixty, excuse me, nine hours of instruction. Russell County Public Schools, it's fifteen days of school for this school year. We do have bank time, if you will, as we do go beyond the requirement for the number of minutes, hours in the day, if you will. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, our recommendation would be that we make up five days with the end of the school year being on that May thirty-first, Friday, before graduation.
All right, thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the last day of school presented by Dr. Brown?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. A question about that, Dr. Brown.
Yes.
Did, you did say that that would be a, I think, this, this.
We're currently scheduled for a full day. I'm speaking to the administrator. We've had some conversations informally about the teacher needing some time there to finish that grades.
This is the point.
Yes, sir. So we'll have that as a part of the agenda for the A D M meeting next Thursday, and that may be something I request of the board at the May second board meeting.
There are motions, second to that. All right, any further discussion of the board? All in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed, the same say. There are none. Dr. Brown, I think it takes us to the Perkins Plan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. With the Perkins Plan, there we go. With Perkins Plan, every year. With the Perkins Plan, the, every year Commonwealth requires that the CTE plan be everybody's support. This plan is, again, similar to the one that we presented last year. We can get that to come up, it'll be something additional for the board members to see. Probably we already had an opportunity, of course, to view what some of our connections today. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. But again, it's the same document, dealing with the new dollar amounts for the FY twenty school year. And again, the board needs to approve such every year.
All right, thank you, sir. The board has had the opportunity to review. I'll take the motion to approve the Perkins Plan presented by Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed, the same say. There are none. Dr. Brown, it takes us down to the first reading under, policy under consideration.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As members of the Virginia School Board Association, Russell County Public Schools, periodically, oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we need to back up, I apologize. We do have the additional action item that we added at the beginning of our agenda. That action item being a request from the eligible group dealing with Bible release time for Belfast Elementary School pilot program for next year. Mr. Chairman, with that being shared, the staff recommend a pilot program for Bible release time for Belfast Elementary for the FY twenty school year be approved with guidelines to be created and approved by legal council.
All right, thanks, sir. This time, the chair entertained the motion to approve the election plan presented by Dr. Brown.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Next, sir, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed, the same say. There are none. Think that takes care of all action items, Dr. Brown?
Yes, sir, thank you, I apologize for that. Our information item, we have one. And again, as members of the Virginia High, excuse me, Virginia School Board Association, Russell County Public Schools periodically receives V S V A policy updates to be examined by our school board members for implementation in Russell County Public Schools Policy Manual. The policy is under consideration, can be seen under the policy tab on board docs. And again, Mr. Chairman, we have fifty-five new policies. Most of those deal with references and such. A few of them deal with actual substantial content changes. But again, those are available for board members to observe. No action required for tonight, Mr. Chairman, but again, those will be available for the board to review after a meeting between now and the next board meeting. But again, under policy chat, tab, if you go to draft policy, you'll see those under section A, and you can click on one of those, and those changes that need to be made are in red. And then those new things that need to be added are in yellow.
All right, thanks, sir. Board, have any questions before we move on? All right. Settle taxes, street ten, nine forty, fifty-eight. Maintenance report, has the board had the opportunity to review the maintenance reports presented? Any questions or concerns? Dr. Brown, anything to report on the maintenance?
Working on several projects, Mr. Chairman, spending some time at Honaker's Day and Castlewood yesterday, so we're moving forward with several projects. And again, looking forward to getting those things done. I appreciate the work of Dr. Addison and his team, as we do deal with those surprises that pop up. And unfortunately, we're getting ready for air conditioning time. And that seems to be a draw on our staff every, every day.
All right, thanks, sir. Any change or report? Dr. Brown, we'll start with you. Do you have anything to expand your report, please?
No, sir, everything's within budget.
Thank you.
What is your update on the A D M? Is this on the?
A D M, I spoke to Ms. Raznick this morning. She will come over, we're going to finalize the March A D M tomorrow afternoon, two o'clock. Overall, for the year, we're only down forty-nine students, which in the last two years has been over eighty. So we're very optimistic, we're heading in the right direction, and maybe we're going to start to reverse the trend of losing and actually gaining. I will say that the losses that we've dealt with with those forty-nine have occurred over the summer primarily. So that's, again, a big time for losing gained students. The A D M actually has years to progress, has not had that dramatic of a, you know, difference.
All right, do you think that's the board? Dr. Brown, before we get into the future agenda items, let's back up and go ahead and take care of the retirements, transfers.
Yes, sir. I apologize.
Resignations, if that's available.
Very unusual for us to have difficulty putting those items up. All right, first, can you pull them up on your system? You came, you weren't able to pull them up on the research.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, then, if you have it for the board, then you have everything that you need. I can review that for the audience. Basically, we have four positions, cafeteria worker, cafeteria worker, Kelsey Presley, Lynda Huffman. Teacher, Mr. Tom Allen, is going to retire. Ms. Tom, Rex Parker is resigned from the eighth-grade boys' baseball coach position. Darrell Puckett, H V A C technician, retiring. And Elizabeth Jesse, Teacher of Lebanon High School.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, this time we'll take a motion to approve the resignation requirements presented by Dr. Brown.
I'll make the motion to approve the resignation as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed, the same say. There are none. Dr. Brown?
All right, Mr. Chairman, as far as our new hires, sorry, as far as our new hires and transfers are concerned, we're dealing with primarily athletics, Brandon Taylor, eighth-grade baseball coach for Lebanon High School, Kayla Neese, volunteer assistant, head coach for Lebanon High School. We have Mickey Eske, volunteer assistant, JV coach for Lebanon High School. Gary Boyd, volunteer baseball coach for Honaker High School. Ashton Dada, teacher at Lebanon High School, that would be a transfer. Kevin Farmer, volunteer assistant softball coach for Lebanon High School. Hunter Lester, volunteer baseball coach for Honaker High School. And Bobby Keys, volunteer softball coach for Lebanon High School.
All right, thank you, sir. This time I'll take a motion to approve the new hires presented by Dr. Brown.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed, the same say. There are none. Dr. Brown, we're down to the future calendar items, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Actually, we had a delegation, I believe, Mr. Chairman. Oh, future account, agenda items, we had none at this point, sir. Future agenda items, none, no use at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I've got items for the next agenda. I'm meeting with the governor's school on April sixteenth, so I'll have a report.
For the next, for the main meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. I already thought of that, then, you probably will be meeting. All right, anything from the board on the future agenda items?
Dr. Brown, we've mentioned some tutoring programs at the last meeting, have, does any of that happen with any of the?
Yes, we've, we've had some meetings on that, we're going to have that in place within the next two weeks. We want to be looking at analyzing our substitute future pool. Spoke to Dr. Hooker earlier, and we want to go ahead and look at communication there with principals to see exactly who needs a lot of assistance, and we'll get that to them at the old start opportunities.
All right, anything else from the board? All right, Dr. Brown, I think that takes you down to the delegation on the agenda, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn the podium over, if anyone would like to address the board.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good evening. First, I'd like to pass the pictures around.
Mr. Gibson, before you begin, please, would you limit to three minutes, please? Whenever you're ready, sir. All right. I'll bring you quick.
This person, I've really been here to talk, over there with the Rascantin. But I'm from Castlewood, my name's Bob Gibson, I've got three kids in Castlewood Elementary and High School. We're here to talk about the problems in your stadium, Lebanon High School. Not that I'm against to continue to look at Castlewood. I was at the Board of Supervisors meeting on Monday night, where I heard that the Lebanon, Lebanon soccer coach and a couple of his players say that they're wooing off when they go to other facilities. Home County, the Castlewood kids woo and off when they come to Lebanon and Honaker facilities. They also, the soccer coach also complained about the field and the grass on their field. It's my understanding that's the same grass as playing in front of you in Castlewood this tournament. To me, it begs the question, if it's not good enough for Lebanon, why is it going to be good enough for Castlewood? Soccer also, coach also complained about the practice field not being in good shape. I've been on that field, and that field is better than Castlewood's current football slash soccer field, that's the home field we have. Also heard Lebanon's principal and football coach talk about the problems at the current stadium. Castlewood's facilities also has some of the same problems, if not worse. Our press, press box needs a new roof. The fence around the football field is in terrible shape and very close to the field. Our bleachers do not have handrails. As far as I know, none of our facilities are fully A D A compliant. Quarter gongs are used on both the football and softball games. Our kids literally play on that field. The softball field has a rough dirt streak, if you've seen the pictures, several people wide running through the entirety of the outfield, which makes it very dangerous, I think, in trying to catch the ball. Now, this will always be present as long as we have. Bleachers going up for football and down for softball. As far as I know, we are the only school in the county that must shower fields. We are, and we are trying to start a soccer problem at Castlewood this year, and it's going to struggle. When you have the temporary outfield fence for the outfield, the softball team, it takes up a good one-third of the softball field. Castlewood a nice facility. Also, at the board meeting, our Lebanon's track coach said that they would love to have a new track, so they could host events. Well, Castlewood doesn't have a track, never has. Uh, in fact, Castlewood's track team travels to Dover possibly to practice on their track. That also has stopped the soccer team's chance of giving some of the athletes to play multiple sports. Now, I have you some of these pictures, look at, uh, showing the shape Castlewood is in. Keep in mind, these did not happen overnight, most of these are not surprises. Uh, it's actually years on the way. For example, the hole in the roof on that field house, it's been there for two years.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Kit Harson would like to give a bottom of my three hands, please.
Thank you. And the, and, and the front of the elementary school and the high schools, you can see, is in terrible need of painting, and it probably needs more extensive work due to the, you know, the years in the glass. And I know that principals have asked for that to be repaired multiple times. Uh, you also see pictures of our lightroom, it's in terrible shape. That Rassington room, shower room, let me ask you, would you want your child to take a shower in that room? Uh, I'm just wanting to read that, I think the bill on your stadium in Lebanon, with the condition that Castlewood is in, is inherently unfired. It's unfair to be, unfair to the kids at Castlewood, it's unfair to the taxpayers at Castlewood. I'm hard to find, but please give us a level of painting. Just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Anything else?
I'd like to say something, I'd like to say to Chris, I won't be as long as I was there tonight, I just wanna say, at the board meeting Monday night, I told them that instead of building a four, four, six million dollar football field and good sessions to go to look out, build a, build, I'm gonna renovate Lebanon North School field and facility to Castlewood, you need to be like Mr. Gibson said, you're being taken care of two fields rather than trying to, you know, put the one ahead of another. I understand Home Neighbors has a good field, I've been over there, good facility, and why, like I said at the last meeting, we were talking around here, I don't understand why the maintenance has not been taken care of these, on these two fields over this period of time. That's something that I think maybe board members, maybe the school board members or board supervisors, they need to get together and see why these things have not been taken care of in a timely manner. And that is one of my big concerns, if what has been taking place, a lack of attention to these things, and they are, and then if we could, let's consider fixing two fields rather than build one and letting two go to the side. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, Dr. Brown, could I make a couple of comments on the project? We are aware of these problems, and I'm sure the principal has already dealt with things, two maintenance, especially that field house that's had plastic over it, it's gone, ball field, football field is in terrible shape. Matter of fact, the Home Neighbors' football coach commented in rest of her, that wasn't safe to play on, and that was in the paper, and I'm sure he said it. And also, I mention this to you, that we're practicing football on baseball field, on the outfield.
Yes.
That's not a good thing, uh, because it does create a lot of problems, and egg holes and ground clinks and so forth, and I think we need to teach it, and I agree with these folks that came to, to deal with this, and this is something that needs to be looked after. I want the recommendations are made by a principal, we need to explain to that person if we're gonna have a failure or not failure, or whatever should be done, and that's just my comment in relation to that. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I understand the situation in Lebanon and Castlewood, and it would be my feelings, and I can work, we work on it, we talk about this, quarter poly doesn't stand those things, I think it's an insult to our community, and we are in the process of, I think, of trying to get those issues straightened out, and every high school has quarter polys everywhere. It's, I think it's, it's not a, not a good situation. Uh, you do have some things that need upkeep, I see that. But the thing that I see, we're gonna have a problem with, yes, you split stuff up and do stuff too, and then you need, if you're not gonna have what amount of money you need probably to fix one or the other, and as, as much as money that we're gonna have to do with, uh, you want one good field somewhere, or you want two half fields somewhere, or two half done projects, uh, that's the dilemma that I have personally. The score is get doing things that need to be done and keep them, but I'm likely, I feel like we do a better job of maintenance, if, but we've, we've had a situation where we let our maintenance department probably get down in numbers just a little bit, when we've had some people retired, let some schools close and so forth, and not have that much. They, they have been working slowly doing some things, uh, this past couple of years that, uh, wasn't foreseen, that's took, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, that's forcing heating and cooling problems that we've had, and then, and some of the, some of them required the money to upgrade the heat and air conditioning systems at some of the schools. And Castlewood was one of those schools that we did upgrade, and, uh, that was, uh, close to a million dollars, I believe, or like six hundred dollars, something like that. But I mean, it's not because money hadn't been spent at the schools, and you have to sort of deviate from where it needs to be, and, and I don't think there's anybody on this board that don't wanna do what's right for everybody. Uh, the field at Home Neighbors, uh, if it hadn't been for the donation, uh, it wouldn't have been done, we'd still be playing, practicing on the same field, but you had the donation, and, uh, no disrespect, but Lebanon and Castlewood both had that offered from that, and that gentleman to do those fields, and you couldn't, the board, or whoever, or whatever, or the people, uh, couldn't make up their mind what they wanted to do or do, and, and doing that, besides the parent of field and everything, you know, that's a million dollars each school, it's gonna be totally white. And, uh, uh, I, I'm for, uh, the, uh, do away with grass fields and build with artificial fields, you can use them, don't have to worry about mud, uniform, and paint, you know, paint itself, and, and lime, and, and, uh, grass seed fertilizing, and mulching, and I'm all for it, and if we can get enough money to do both fields and do them right, I'm all for it, and, uh, I think what's more is to...
Well, you can comment what you say, Wayne, I don't want to discredit anybody's testimony, when people moved in, put the artificial turf down at Castlewood, brought equipment down, and apparently something happened to the finances in the company.
Well, I don't know.
It never happened.
Okay, now, you're telling me something I don't know.
It never happened, let's put it that way.
But I don't, I'll do that, okay.
That's the comment I will make in the, in the eighties, around about eighty-three or eighty-four, we had a lot of problems just like you had at Home Neighbors.
You did, yeah.
Okay, what happened, the poles were bad, and at that time, the superintendent decided to cut our poles down, and we did not play daylight games, we played Saturday games, or went to another field, and we went like that for one whole year, probably into another. Jeff, you may remember that, I don't know if you do or not, but I remember it distinctly. My son was a senior that year, and did not sit there and not dance, well, then lights down. I don't think communities now would tolerate it.
I don't either, but I think, best to my recollection, uh, in our conversation on doing some of this stuff, uh, we are going to try to take care of the lighting at all three stadiums.
Lighting.
And, and the fields, kind of this, but there is gonna be some money out of this thing, hopefully, if it comes, what we think is gonna come, to do some upgrades at everybody's place, and, uh, but now, uh, that chicken hasn't passed its egg yet, so we don't know what, where we staying.
I just think we need consideration for money.
Well, I think everybody does, yeah.
Because we, even the, the coach commented, and this was true, that the ball field wasn't safe. I went to a game, the referee fell down, the lady was called, because the field was slick and muddy, took a while to get back up, I thank you with our Jeff Manett.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I would make the comment too, because I'm representative of their Castlewood, and I have to agree with Phil.
Wow.
I just said, I just said that to him. But I would have to agree, uh, and a lot of these, like he said, you know, a lot of these problems, they didn't happen overnight, you know, and it's happened, and, but it has caught up with us. Uh, the field issue, uh, you know, we started this, this, me and Dr. Brown and Alan have been talking about this now, we finally got it off the ground last year with this Bermuda. Uh, the, the problem with the, the AstroTurf at, at our current field, there's no work for the water to drain. It, it, it's like Bob says, we're landlocked, we would have to divert the water onto someone else's property and, and not do that. But this turf, this, you know, we're going with the Bermuda turf, which in my mind, it's a better playing field anyway, it's softer, you're gonna have less injuries, but we had to get our irrigation system in, because if you do this springing, you have to keep it wet. It has to be like a rice paddy through the hot months of the year, June, July, and everybody that we've talked to says, if you don't have a way to irrigate it, no, no sense putting it in. That's why our field was so bad last year. Alan and his crew, they did a great job, they put, it's pretty, I mean, it's a pretty impressive irrigation system for football fields around here.
What was the amount?
I'm not sure what the total dollar amount, but I'm sure Alan and them spent a lot of hours. Now...
Irrigation system is about ten, eleven thousand dollars.
You know, hopefully, you know, with, with that being said, this spring, we start with this Bermuda, and we have a, a good playing field, but I would agree, we, we, we haven't had a good, a good field. Uh, the fascia, me and Alan have talked about that, I've talked to Ms. Lila and Ms. Paula Banner, uh, we don't know which way to go. I've asked them their opinion, I think Alan has talked to them maybe about just boxing that in, where we don't have to scrape it and paint it and the upkeep, you know, so...
We're gonna have to study, uh, we're gonna bring in contractors to give us a valuation of price on what that would look like to go through, and maybe save some of the dental molding right above the door to the entrance to the, to the schools, because architecture of it...
I, I see exactly what Bob's saying, and I, I have kids there, I, I played there, I went to school there, and, you know, and it is kind of bad, but on the other hand, I've been to a lot of schools this year, baseball fields. I don't think any of them have lights. We went to Chill Howie, no lights, no, no bathrooms, we've been to, Patrick Henry did it, Northwood did not, Twin Valley did not, so, you know, in comparison, we're still kind of better than a lot of neighboring counties, but, but I agree, I mean, we, we could be better, we could be better.
And I, I will say this, in reference to the Lebanon field, it's disgraceful not to have some restroom facilities closed, it's disgraceful not to have some handicap entrance and so forth. Uh, these things, I don't know why it's gone on this long without something like that being put in place, I guess, and, and what we've done, we, what we've done, Wayne, we've done a lot of other projects, and we've put them ahead of what needs to be done, but it's time for Castlewood to get their tape, and I'm gonna stand up for them as long as I'm on this board, and I think Jeff will too.
Yeah.
Because it's necessary to get to what we deserve.
I'm gonna make one more comment before you, Wayne, uh, 'cause I meant to say this. I know that the year that we closed Gibbons, Alan and his staff probably spent almost a year getting Swords Creek ready, right? Is that correct? I mean, uh, or most of the summer, um, the whole summer, and then moving things from, from Gibbons, so that, like Wayne said, that's, that's a project that, you know...
We didn't say, like, you know, but, but you wanted to move it up there.
You know, unforeseeable, so, that's a lot of man-hours. Uh, it didn't happen overnight, it's not gonna probably change overnight, but...
I see some...
We're moving in the right direction.
I see a lot of them, brood, get, uh, get everything, we may not get everything we want, I mean, uh, that's like, I wonder if the baseball field down there, the lights down there was donated, were they, uh, they were donated to us.
The lights at the, the county got all three fields locked in at the same time.
Well, it's a part of the rocks.
It all happened at once, they were bought for everybody.
Yeah.
I remember that.
Yeah.
We bought them and made payments on them, we did not pay for them all at once.
And then you had the bleachers, they come from over, uh, Henry Henry, I mean, that was from Henry, yeah.
And ours came from Northwood, and basketball, yes.
That's right, yeah. And we've been, uh, been fortunate to be, what's the name, Jimmy, Detective Nicky Givney, I guess, but anyway, but I'm, I'm all for doing everything we can, what came with, everybody, it may not be even, but it's gonna, everybody's gonna do something, I think, okay? And, uh, I wanna do, if we do, I wanna do right, I wanna have to, because that's what we seem to have done in the past, just, uh, just do something. And I don't, I look at those pictures there, and I don't like what I see, okay, I agree. Uh, I look at the evidence pictures, I don't like what I see either, and, uh, but now, uh, it's, uh... I will say that, uh, we've been fortunate at Home Neighbors in, uh, keeping things pretty good shape, and we have a different, I, I don't wanna say this and not be taken wrong, but we have a whole lot of people that helped us, we have been fortunate the last several years to step in and help do some of the things that needed to be done, uh, if we just had the stuff to go on with and so forth, and, uh, we have, we have, the little community overall has been, uh, so good to work together and help each other out and do things for different, different purposes, and even different individuals buying things and helping with it, and, uh, but, uh, we need, we need things over there too, and I hadn't mentioned any of them to, uh, our football field fences are the same work, we can't keep, and something happened, and, and the fences to keep them off the field, and, uh, but I, I actually think, uh, that it's, it's time that we update a lot, a lot of things, a lot of things that's, uh, that's, uh, there, but, uh, again, it takes money from the board supervisor, what we can do with that. But I will tell you that, uh, my commitment right now is to, uh, look after everybody's, everybody's district, but also, uh, I mean, for example, uh, this master plan of this football field was down there thirty years ago at the high school when it was built, and it's never been done, so it's thirty years behind.
Well, Wayne, you said something that's very important to me, and I'm not gonna dominate this, maybe even though it's time to adjourn and make up the house. Uh, you gotta involve your community, just like the principal in the school, when you go back to moving the football field, the main person to get something done up there is Joey Long. He's the principal, he knows the community, so he needs to get, be able to raise some money, get people on board, and if there's people that will listen to that, if they're don't have money, it don't have to all come out of our budget, and I haven't seen this happen. It hasn't happened at Castlewood, nobody's told us that we need to do that, but I'm telling you, that's the way you build something, you don't do it...
That's the way hundreds...
Because money's not, Home Neighbors did it, you're telling exactly right. I remember when it happened.
And if it hadn't have done, it wouldn't have happened, you know, and, and for all its worth, to our pastor, that was, uh, the left, uh, Mike Simmons, here, Lebanon, he 's our pastor, Swords Creek, and Doug was her, uh, was over there, and the first thing that happened to it, with our practice field, it was very much in the little paper, and I never will forget what, uh, what the field fixed, because before they get the season there, already Doug would have the middle of it wore out, and ash mark, paddy mark, the grass was gone, and I know I was there several times, and took the road raders, dug it up, and tried to make it roll and everything, but anyway, I talked with, uh, uh, Phil Simmons out in, um, Dallas, talking good, told him, hey, the field fixed and everything, we'll be able to play our first game on it, and he says, well, Doug dug the middle of it wore out yet, so, can't play. And I told him, no, he hadn't dug the word out yet, but it, it was good, he was like, help everybody, you know, really, uh, to have it down there for D E and stuff, for football and practice and D E, same thing down there, you're all like, make it, get a field down there that way, just, uh, the other, but as close as it is to school, it really works out good for people to get out in the weather, the bad, and not step in mud holes and rubs, and, and keep your clothes, and, you know, so, I would help you all, I pledge, I'll give you a thing, I think, of course, I may not be here after here, but anyway, it's, uh, it's, it's kind of... and keep the clothes and, you know, et cetera. I will help you all, I'm glad you all give me a thing, I think, of course, I may not be here after here, but still, give me a, but anyway, it's, uh, it's, it's kind of... I think, uh, Dr. Brown, he, uh, from what I see from him, he wants to do everything he can for all the schools at the time.
All right, I think, anything else by the board?
I'm sorry?
All right, I'm gonna close it up. Bob, I, I've known Bob many, many years. And I'm a little, you know, Charlie says he's here for his district, I'm here for Russell County School System. Bob will help you in any way we can. I don't like what I see here either, and every school has it. And I think everybody knows that, that's what we've been saying, so we'll work to correct what we can.
I think everybody's gonna say the same thing.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else by the board? All right, next schedule, school board meetings made second, executive session begin at five. This time I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Do you have a second?
Take it.
All in favor, signify the same as. Close the same sign. Thank you.